I appreciate it.
Councilmember Wallace, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor Conger.
I'll call the December 3rd Jackson City Council meeting to order, and I'll ask Councilmember Ross Pretty to lead us in our invocation and pledge. Would please stand.
That's great. Father, thank you for today, and just coming off Thanksgiving holiday, we have so much to be thankful for in our city. We pray that you continue to lead us and guide us and give us wisdom to serve the citizens of Jackson and make decisions that benefit everyone. Going into Christmas, we ask you to watch over us and help us to remember those less fortunate than us. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the roll call, I want to hope everyone had an opportunity last night to attend or see the Christmas parade and the tree lighting outside. I want to give our city employees a big round of applause. They did a fantastic job. All right, Anita, I think you can see all council members are present. And then item four is approval of the minutes from the November 5th, 2019 council meeting. There are no additions or corrections to those minutes. They'll be approved as read. I don't know what that is. And no proclamations today. Item six, invitation for public comment. If there's any items under first readings, if you'd like to be heard in favor of or opposition to, raise your hand at that time. You'd be recognized. Item seven is first readings. We have consideration of an ordinance to amend the official code of the City of Jackson, Title II, boards, commissions, et cetera, relative to the Budget Committee. I'll call on Councilmember Taylor for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a formalization of the Budget Committee. We've been operating as an ad hoc committee for the present. This would establish a standing budget committee. As it's structured right now, that would be composed of two members of the council and five at-large members to be recommended by the mayor to the council for appointment. Their terms would be four-year terms, and those would be staggered accordingly. They would be able to adopt rules of procedure and elect a chairman, and their powers and duties are limited to recommendations and advisory function to the council and to the mayor's office.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Taylor, is there any questions on the Budget Committee?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've studied the Budget Committee proposal, and I'm in full agreement except for 803, the composition of the committee. And I would like to have the council considering, consider three council members to make up the committee along with four at-large members. Three and four were for odd number for the council to consider that. Three council members and four remaining at-large members. That's odd number seven.
Mm-hmm.
And that council member should have some accounting experience. And I'll offer that in the form of a motion.
Okay. There's a motion to amend the proposed ordinance as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions on that?
So for clarification purposes, this would be composed of three council members, four at-large members, with the preference of that new additional council member having some financial or accounting experience.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
All right, now we're back to, we're going to make a motion on the proposed ordinance as amended.
Move the approval.
Second.
And motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Well, let's do me off, Councilmember Buchanan. We'll open a public hearing on this. Anyone in favor of or opposition to? All right. Item two is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the City zoning ordinance, Article 5, specific district regulations, Section 20, Office District B, uses permitted to allow beauty shops as a use permitted.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
This amendment, you have the materials pertinent to do it. And basically, all the office districts in the City of Jackson now allow beauty shops, except for this one. And so we did not see any problem with including it in this one, just to make it consistent across the board. It fits. We've got office districts that are less intensive than the O., and they allow them in that one. So we felt that was a good amendment.
Can you update us where we are on the zoning ordinance draft and rewrite, and how this would fit into that?
Yeah, we've got a final draft, but we are still evaluating some of the things in that. There are a few sections that we're working on, but we plan on bringing that to you. Probably, it's probably going to be sometime in the spring.
Okay. And this would be consistent with the direction that we're going in in that regard?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions from counsel? All right, this is an item on first reading, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of or opposition to, we recognize. Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Mayor, I have a quick question, if I may. Stan, have you heard from any people in this industry, any beauty shops or barber shops relative to this?
Well, this was a request from some in the industry and also some property owners that had office-owned property. They've gotten requests from people wanting to do a beauty shop, and up to now, they've been excluded from this district. And so we have more office district zone property than we do some of the other office classes. So it just made sense that it would be allowed in this one, too.
So it makes it more inclusive or?
It does. It gives more opportunity for beauty shops to establish in areas that are zoned office, which is more prevalent than others. So it gives them more opportunity for property.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
No move.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Thank you. Item eight, second readings, consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Jackson, FY '20, or 315 Capital Budget Fund and the Number 211 Debt Service Fund Budget.
Move the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine is new business. Have a consideration of Cedar Brook Farmers, Phase 3A and 3B, Birch Hollow Lane, 322 to 329, Hidden Springs Lane, 76 to 88 Grove Hill Lane, and portions of Farmbrook Lane and Deloitte Road, as depicted on the attached map.
No move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, questions? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two under new business is a consideration of Windstone, Section 3, 5, and 6, Pine Hill Cove, 60 and 61 Mallory Drive, 38 to 75 Mallory Drive, and a portion of Fall Creek Drive.
No move.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion or questions from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three under new business is a consideration for approval of a contract for Bermuda sod.
Periodically, the city revises its contracts, and this time, sod was up the bid. We sent out invitations to bid, as we do on all of our contracts. We put a legal in the newspaper. We send it to the Jackson Chamber of Commerce. They put it on their website. I send it to Nell Huntsman for the African-American Chamber of Commerce. She puts it on her website. And we send out invitations to bid. And this time, we did that, and we received three bids. One was from Tri-Turf Sod Farms, one was from Carol Sod Farm, and one was from McCurdy Sod Farms. The lowest and best bid, well, the best bid was from Tri-Turf Sod Farm. And I've given you, if you'll look at this sheet, I've given you their 2018 prices, which is what we're currently paying. So it's not that much more for the delivered and installed prices. And also included in that is preparation of the site, the labor and machine needed to grade the area before they put the sod down. So it's our recommendation for you to award this to Tri-Turf Sod Farms.
Thank you, Susan. I think there's any que-- we have some people, I think, that saw from the sports flex in here. If there's any questions for them.
Kenny Frank should be here.
Kenny's here. There you are, right there. Y'all have any questions for Kenny on the sod? No questions. I'll ask for a motion.
Make the motion.
Your motion. Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Next up, we have consideration for approval of a contract for citywide pest control services.
And this follows the same procedure as the sod. And we received three bids. One was Tennessee Valley, one was Golden Circle, and one was Homestead. Tennessee Valley is the lowest and best bidder at $15,040 a year versus the high bid of Golden Circle, $27,030. And they are also our current provider, and they do a very good job.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. White, you got the list of buildings that they take care of. What's the frequency, monthly?
What is the what?
The buildings, the city-owned buildings.
What's the frequency of service?
Once a month. Once a month.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions?
Move the approval.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any additional comments? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item five under new business, a consideration for approval of a contract for collection services.
In February 2013 until January 2017, the city used Robinson, Reagan, and Young in Nashville as a collection service for the city. Then in 2016, Blake, our judge Blake Anderson, took city courts' collections back so that the employees could start collecting again. But by taking the city courts' collection, that left very few for this company to collect. So we ended the collection for the city. Then in August of this year, Mayor Conger asked that the city send out proposals for collection service once again. We sent out 15 invitations. We placed the proposal on the city's website and ran a notice in the local paper announcing that the proposals would be received. Only one was received, and it was from Universal Collection Systems in Memphis. And this is a veteran-owned company with a contract through the federal government, and they gave them special pricing that they could pass along to us. And they named them as a certified collection agency. They've been in business for over 25 years and have 40 employees. They had glowing references, and they will charge us 20, I think it's 22% of all the monies collected. And we had Al Lefoon, Councilman Pickens, and I on a committee, and we all voted unanimously to award this to Universal.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. White, good morning.
Good morning.
With respect to our collection services, in the past, it's been through the city court.
Well, this company, before this one, when we had--
Yes.
We had City Court, H&amp;S, and the Police Department. And this time, we'll have those same three, plus the Building Department. And any other department that chooses, they can add on to this contract as well.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
No, council--
It's been going through the court.
City Court will still do their collection services. This will be above and beyond what we already offer.
They already collect, and money that they can't collect, we turn it over to them.
Very good. What's been our rate of collection? Does anyone know?
Very low.
That would be a question for the accounting department. I don't know.
Very low.
Right.
Very low.
Very low.
That was for Mal.
I have a question, if I may, and I don't know if this was what Mr. Buchanan was getting at. So this collection agency, this company will collect the city court fines and costs that are outstanding.
That's true.
Will they do the same for the city center and all the other city?
Any department that wants to be added to this contract can do so. I made a phone call to, I think, all the departments to see if they wanted to be added to this, and at that time, they didn't. They said they could handle it in-house.
Okay, so, and I guess you answered my question. So if they don't want to be added, then they will do that themselves?
Right. You know, if they do a good job at collecting, there's no need to turn it over to the collection agency.
Susan, that would not impact our pricing, because it's, if we added more departments?
No.
Because it's based on what they collect.
How would this operate? So in the city court situation, they handle it internally first, and if they aren't successful, they then turn it over to this particular company?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions? Have a motion?
Motion we approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item six under new business is a consideration for approval of a contract for long-term disability.
And once again, it's time to bid this out, long-term disability. And currently, we have Symetra Life Insurance, and I gave you a copy of the purchase order that shows the one that we're currently under. And right now, we have Stacy Stone with Risk Management, and she'll explain to you what long-term disability is, and will also explain the options, the employee buy-up and the core benefit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So long-term disability insurance is insurance to replace lost income in the event of a long-term disability. So if someone has a medical condition or an on-the-job injury where they're not able to return to work within six months, they can apply for this coverage, and it would, if approved, that would replace their income up to 60%. We've been with Symetra since, I believe, December of 2013, and they're the only bid that we received this time. There will be a slight rate increase this time, but we have had claims over the past few years, so that's understandable. There's two benefit options, the core benefit that is paid for by the city, and then the buy-up option that is paid for fully by the employee. The core benefit paid by the city would see an increase of approximately $7,300 for the year, and this would be a three-year rate guarantee. The employees would see a slight increase as well, about $1.70 or so a pay period on average, but it depends on their salary. So the higher the salary, the higher the rate per pay period they have to pay. But they do have the option to cancel it whenever they want. We did send out notices to let everybody know what their new rate would be, and to let them know if they wanted to cancel, if they could contact our office. So they've had that option.
Thank you, Stacy.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions from counsel?
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item seven is consideration for approval of a contract for deferred compensation.
Requests for qualifications were received by the Purchasing Department in August. Two companies, Voya and Lincoln Financial responded. Out of 12 invitations that were sent, we have one, which is the International City Management Association Retirement Company, replied with a letter that they would not be sending out their qualifications to us. There's a company called Retire Ready, and that's a state of Tennessee program that's already been out. It's like a state contract. So they were not required by law to send anything to us. However, they weren't interested in speaking with us. An evaluation committee was formed. It was Al Lefoon, Lynn Henning, Bobby Arnold, and Ross Pretty and I as members. And we evaluated Voya and Lincoln Financial's statement of qualification. Retire Ready was interviewed, but they explained their program, their qualifications, and the same information that was asked of Voya. We placed a conference call to Lincoln Financial. Then on October 2nd, the committee met once again. We talked about each company. We ranked them. We shared information that we had. And Lincoln Financial was the third choice out of the three being considered. Retire Ready and Voya were ranked about the same, so the cost involved was extremely important in making this decision. And Bobby Arnold is here to explain the variable rates and the fixed rates, too.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The committee looked at a number of criteria that Ms. White had designed for us to evaluate all of the applicants. I guess the three that I'd probably comment on this morning. Most of our employees have their deferred compensation funds invested in fixed-rate funds, so the return or crediting rate that our employees earn on those funds was a very important criteria that we used. And Voya provided the highest return for our employees. And moving forward, looking into future years, they made commitments with the floor and kind of laid out what the rates would be moving forward. A number of our employees do invest in mutual funds and other non-fixed investment options. So the rate, the variable expense ratio on those funds that our employees pay, that was another important criteria that we looked at. And again, Voya had the lowest expense ratio on the variable funds for our employees, and this actually resulted in a decrease in the cost to our employees with the new contract moving forward. And I think the third maybe important criteria that we looked at has been level of service and satisfaction with Voya and a local office and access for our employees and services that they provide to our employees.
Thank you, Bobby. We have members from Voya here, if there's any questions specific for them.
Move the approval.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Item made under new business is consideration for approval of a contract for website design.
On October 9th, statements of qualifications were received for the new website design. 15 invitations were sent out, and they were Civic Love, Planetarium Media, Civic Plus, Jesse James Creative, 3North Marketing, and Younger and Associates. From those six, a committee ranked the firms, and I think you have the evaluation form in your package. The top four were selected to send proposals to and ask for prices. And out of those, only two firms, Civic Love and Civic Plus, responded. The city wants to use, and Brian Taylor's here with the IT department, he'll explain to you about the citizen request system, but the city wanted 100 users on this. So we went back and asked for cost, and the final costs are attached, and it is our recommendation to award this to Entrado. During our negotiations, the name of the company was West Interactive Service Civic Love, but during all the negotiations, they changed their name to Entrado. Mr. Taylor?
Good morning. One of the big things we were tasked with looking at by Mayor Conger was a citizen request portal. This would allow the citizens to go on the website. Any issues they had that they needed to be addressed, from potholes to blight to anything of that nature, they could put into the system through the website, and then we would have a methodology for tracking those requests as they worked their way through the departments responsible for taking care of them. The mayor's office would be able to look in, the citizens would be able to look in and see that it's been acknowledged by the department, that it was in process of being fixed, and then they could be notified once it was completed, once it was fixed. And like she said, we looked at several. Civic Love had the best citizen request portal. They specialize in municipal websites. They understood the goals we were trying to reach, and we think it's going to be a good fit and really help with citizens trying to get services from us.
Any questions for counsel?
Just to confirm, I think you know where we're trying to head with the website, integrating GIS and some mapping and expanding the mapping that we currently have. Just to confirm, this ticketing system or reporting system would align with those goals of being able to track, geolocate potholes and other problems or issues that we have in the city that we need to take care of.
Yes, sir. That was one of the, another one of the selling points was the fact that it would create a lot of data points through, like I said, if you take a picture of a pothole, you take a picture of graffiti, something of that nature, it would geolocate it. We would have those points that we could plot out in ESRI on geomapping services for the different departments to address and to make decisions on spending even later on from those points of data.
And questions regarding, currently, we have the engineering department and the street department using the iWork system.
Right.
Is there an integration between the two of those?
I think it could be made to work between the two of them. At one point, we may end up not necessarily needing the iWork system, just simply because this would be a work-order system that would keep track of all those. It would be more centralized and hopefully streamline that process. So I think after we get this in place, we could reevaluate even having to use other outside ticketing systems and save a little money there.
Okay. Do you have a launch time?
I think it's going to take about eight months from the time we have the first meeting to get this done right. This is a complete redesign from the ground up. We want to get the departments involved. We want to make sure each of the departments is trained to keep their section updated, and so we get the information out to the citizens as fast as we can. But it looks like about an eight-month process from the time we kick this off.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like a great proposal, but I want to also ask with respect to our new initiative of calling in on the 311, which you had lagged me on there somewhat.
Yeah, so our 311 number just replaces the 425 city, and so it's saying people answering. Once we get the website up and going, then someone calls in the 311, and it would go into this ticket system. Just the folks answering the phone call put into the ticket system. So it makes it transparent to everyone calling in. So what Mr. Taylor was talking about, so the geolocation, if someone, two people see the same pothole, they can go online, and it won't be a duplication of reporting, because they can see that a pothole or blight or graffiti was already reported, and they don't have to report it again. So it doesn't, it cuts down the duplication of reporting as well.
To speak to that a little bit more, I think the combination of the 311 line with this online ticketing system will allow multiple avenues for citizens to engage with the government.
Access.
I move to approve.
Second. Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Item nine under new business is board appointments. Have the reappointment of Joe Aldrich for a five-year term with the Jackson Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
I voted, Ricky. I'm sorry. Let the lady, I'm sorry.
Next, keep Jackson beautiful. We have a reappointment of Carol Emery for a three-year term, appointment of Keith Davis for a three-year term, and appointment of Ann Vanderlin to fulfill the remaining term of Joanne Aldrich. Oh, horrible, sorry.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Next, our city tree board. Have a reappointment of Trey Watson for a two-year term, appointment of Jason Dunlap, and appointment of Brian James, all for two-year terms.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Next is the municipal planning organization. Have the appointment of Councilman Russ McKelvey.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one abstaining.
Item ten is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Any other business?
I'd like to recognize that we have some leadership Jackson in our group. If you all wouldn't mind standing, please. You're looking at some new leaders. Thank you, Mayor Conger.
I'd also, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Russ.
I'd also like to point out, tomorrow is their last class session, and they're literally doing their homework the night before the test, so. We've had a lot of fun, though.
I hope. Mr. Chairman, I hope that the council and mayor behave themselves so we can get good grades. I pray that we did well, Leadership Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, the fire chief is here today. And chief, would you stand? And I believe you have someone with you. Some folks may not have met yet, but if you would stand chief and introduce that young man to you. He used to be my next-door neighbor, so I got to treat him nice, you know? I want to tell you about Don. Don has extensive knowledge of the fire service, and I'll tell you, I think it was a great move to bring Don on board. So, I think we'll see great things out of that fire department.
Any other business?
No.
Meeting is adjourned.